I was thinking we would start today by. So everybody can see my screen properly, right? Good, okay, thank you. So I was thinking today we could start by finishing. This practice set of questions from TalkSoy. That I have not finished, so maybe I I I went up until. I did chapter number four, so maybe let's start with number five and we'll go from there. These are loan questions in general. And percent interest rate stuff. I also wanna mention quickly that I have. I have notes on this, I have my latex notes, so. Uh and it goes all the way until bonds. It doesn't actually talk about the math relating to bonds because I don't really know how to do that, so I don't really didn't really type anything, but. It does include add-on loans and other week five content, which is what we're doing uh now essentially, so. Yeah, and it has all the formulas for all this. Of course, it doesn't have the table, so yeah, so this. Sorry, this the this, which I will download and put in the uh homework help. Yes, I'll put in homework help for. ECN on the server, so there it is. So. And I am recording, we're good, okay. So let's get into it, I guess. Let's start with the question that I wanted to start with here. Now hopefully, we can kind of work together here and figure this out because I'm not very good. I said that in the announcement. I hope everybody knows coming here. And anybody watching the recording, I'm not very good. I make lots of mistakes and get very confused, so. Let's see how much we can do as a group here. How many people are here? Eighteen people are watching the stream, so eighteen minds are better than one. Let's see if we can do it. Hopefully, some of us know a little bit of.
You didn't include yourself.
I guess so, I guess so, but would would I include myself? Do I know enough to even be included?
Yes, you do.
I do, okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Let's let's give this one a try. You plan to buy two hundred thousand, a two hundred thousand dollar home with a ten percent down payment. The bank you want to finance a loan suggests two options, a twenty-year mortgage with nine percent APR and a thirty-year mortgage with ten percent APR. What is the difference in monthly payments for the first twenty years between the two options? Use semi-annual compound. Okay, so what's the important information? Well, it's a two hundred thousand dollar home, but we make a ten percent down payment. Okay, semi-annual compounding. Okay, and then there's the two options here, which I'll highlight in different colors. We have the twenty-year mortgage at nine percent. And the thirty-year mortgage at ten percent. Okay, and we're looking for the first twenty years of things happening, right? So let's figure out actually how much the loan is. Well, the loan is only ten percent of two hundred thousand. Right, ten percent of two hundred thousand, which I shouldn't have to use a calculator for, but I am gonna use a calculator, uh zero point one times two hundred. Thousand, so it's twenty thousand dollars. Nope, that doesn't make sense. It's ninety percent. So it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, right? So we're only, we're only, we we already paid ten percent of it off, so. We're making a nine ninety percent of two hundred thousand. That's what the loan is. A hundred and eighty thousand dollar loan. Okay, so that's our principal amount or like the principal like that, so we take out. So. Uh, two options. What is the difference in monthly payments for the first twenty years? Okay, so first of all, how many, how many um months are in twenty years? Well, so the the number of compounding periods. Number of com. Pound, well, sorry, number of payment periods. Number of payment. Periods is um uh twenty times twelve, which is, well, it was monthly payments, yeah. So twenty times twelve is. Two hundred and forty. Okay, so we have this now. So that's number of payment periods. Now we know in the first one. Number of monthly payments in the first twenty years, you buy these two options. APR means what again? It's not nominal. APR means. What'd you say, sorry?
Uh, I'm pretty sure APR is is the monthly calc.
Yeah, is it here? Let's see what it says, see what it says right here. The first measure is called APR, also called.
For annual.
It is nominal rate, it is nominal rate, there you go.
Uh, annual, oh my bad.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry, don't worry. Very confusing, yeah. Okay, so it is the same thing as nominal. So we wanna turn this into an effective rate per payment period. Right, effective rate per payment period. So if I take that first one and it's nine percent, right, that's nominal. But again, I wanna turn that into an effective. Effective rate. Per whoops, per payment. Period. Okay, so to do that, I use this formula. I think all of this should have a asterisk on it, asterisks, as whatever, uh that. Says, I think, we could get the wrong, I don't really know what I'm doing. This is just what I think would work. Okay, so to get the effective rate, we do. We do the effective rate is one plus the nominal rate, zero point zero nine over. Okay, C K, C is the number of, well, K is usually easier to calculate, so the number of payment periods per year. That's twelve. And then the number of compounding periods per payment period. So it's compounded semi-annually every six months, so it's one-sixth of a compounding period every payment period. Right, because if it's every six months, so we have, this is a year, right, it's split into twelve parts. Okay, can I count twelve things? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. So it's split into twelve months, right, but one, two, three, four, five, six. It's compounded every six months. So in one. In one payment period, there's one-sixth. Oh, sorry, in one, I should say, in one payment period, this is, this is zero here. This is zero, one, two, three, four, five, six. In one. Payment period, it's one-sixth of the compounding period. Right, and then I do to the power of a sixth, I guess. Minus one. So that's that, that's gonna be our effective rate per payment period. So one plus zero point zero nine over twelve times a sixth, which is just two, but I'll still write. A sixth. To the power of. A sixth minus one. So I get my effective rate per payment period is zero. Zero point zero zero seven three six three, um not percent, a as a decimal, so as a percent, that's. Zero point seven three six three percent. Okay, so now. What is the difference in monthly payments? So we wanna figure out what is the, well, we're looking for A. Pretty much A give, it's it's just A given P. Uh for different amounts of time, right? So actually, this is, this is the payment periods in twenty years. But the num- number of payment periods in thirty years. Is thirty times twelve, um which is. My brain is not working today, I'm tired. I'm just gonna do it on a calculator. Three hundred and sixty payment periods. So now, to figure out the um monthly payments, well, okay, we're gonna do A equals. P. A given P I for N, right, right? So we're getting the monthly payments, right, monthly payments, given the principal. We know the principal, the principal is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Right, so for the first option. For the first option, that's gonna be, the the monthly payments are gonna be a hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, a hundred and eight thousand, yeah, there you go, times um A given P. For uh zero point seven three six three percent uh for twenty years, which is two hundred and forty payment periods. So A is, and I have to find the formula for this. So the formula for this, I have it on my other screen here. A pin, there you go. There you go, there's the formula, this is just from my notes. So this is going to be a hundred and eighty thousand. Times, so the percentage rate as a decimal is zero point zero zero seven three six three. Times one point zero zero seven three six three to the power of two hundred and forty. Over one point zero zero seven three six three to the power of two hundred and forty minus one. This will return us to. Yeah, this'll work, this will work, this won't change, this won't mess up our time. So I just do this now. A hundred and eighty thousand. I missed a zero here. I'm tired today, guys, I'm sorry. This is gonna be zero point zero zero seven three si- uh seven three six three. Zero point zero zero seven three six three, yep, one point zero zero seven three six three to the power of two hundred and forty over. One point zero zero seven three six three to the power of two hundred and forty minus one. So I got that the uh the payments are gonna be a hundred and six, uh one thousand six hundred point five. Okay, let's try to take a look at the next one for the second option. What are the payments? It's gonna be very similar, it's gonna be um A. Is gonna be P A given P I N, okay? So our annual um our our payments. Are going to be um. A hundred and eighty thousand. Times A given P at zero point uh. Yes, zero point zero zero seven three six three percent for um six, three hundred and sixty payment periods. Yeah. Okay, and then I, well, I gotta plug that into a formula again, so a hundred and eighty. Thousand times, move this down. Times, this is going to be zero point zero, well, that's right, that should should have been a percent, so. Zero point that percent, so zero point zero zero seven three six three. One point zero zero seven three six three to the power three hundred and sixty. Over one point zero zero seven three six three to the power three hundred and sixty minus one. Okay, let's try this out. I'm just gonna, I'm just changing the powers. My last one. So it's. Three hundred and sixty there. Three hundred and sixty there, so I got a hundred and forty, one, I can't, one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven point one dollars. So the difference is gonna be one sixteen hundred point five minus fourteen twenty-seven point one. So sixteen hundred point five minus answer. So I got the difference is one seventy-three point four dollars. Let's see if that is the correct answer, which would be nice. No. Okay, let's see what happened. This number is correct.
Don't we have to switch the second interest rate into an effective interest rate? Since it's ten percent now, not nine.
Oh, it's ten percent, yes, I did not account for that ten percent, okay, good. Uh, yes, thank you, so that that was the problem. I did not account the fact that it changed the interest, the 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 uh right here changed. So that's the effective interest rate for number one. For number one, for number one. But then the effective interest rate for number two. Right, is gonna be a very similar thing, one plus, but this is zero point one over twelve over six. Twelve times, one over six. The power of one over six minus one. Okay, so that's, that's the interest rate for uh the part number two, which is going to be um. One plus zero point one over twelve times. A sixth to the power of a sixth minus one. So I get zero point zero zero eight one six five, so zero point uh eight one six five percent. So now, using this, I that's, that's the percentage rate I need to use here for the second one. Not the seven something, so zero point eight one six five, zero point eight one six five. Pres- percent, so this is. Eight one six five, eight one six five, eight one six five, there we go. So now I need to go back. And I'll just change the. Now. Eight one six five. Okay, so now my uh constant payment is one fi- uh one thousand. I can't read numbers today, one thousand five hundred and fifty-two point eight dollars. Now, the difference is going to be slightly different. Thousand five hundred and fifty-two point eight, so sixteen hundred point five minus the answer. Is the correct answer, which is uh forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Which is the answer to the question. Yep, we're good. Okay, any questions about this question? It's not too bad, it wasn't too bad, but yeah, any questions? Okay, otherwise, I will just keep going. So there's eight questions that are left, like, sorry, there's eight questions in this pack. We're on question number six. So there's only six, seven, eight, so three more. And then we'll move on to a midterm. So a one thousand dollar, nine point five percent semi-annual bond is purchased for one thousand and ten dollars. If the bond is sold at the end of three years and six interest payments, what should the selling price be to yield ten percent return on investment? Okay, so this is the first time I'm doing a bond question. I don't really know how to do bond questions. So let's make a uh. Cash flow diagram. So, I guess I should do it in black, shouldn't I? So, I guess how long? We don't know how many years. Oh no, three years and six interest payments. So, we have. Here, we purchase, we lose a thousand dollars. Thousand dollars, oh no, sorry, is is purchased for a thousand ten dollars. Okay. But it has a value of a thousand. I guess that's the face value of a thousand, I don't know. So it's, if it's sold at the end, so one. Two, uh trying to make them equally spaced, but whatever. Okay, so this is one, two, three, four, five. It's sold at the end of three years and six, six months for some amount, right, sorry, three years and six interest payments. Uh because it's a semi, I guess semi, it's nine point five percent semi-annual. So here, we get X amount of money. We want X to be a ten percent return on the amount put in. Right, we want, we want X is equal to one point one times the uh cash outflows. It's kind of a bad way to say it, but I think, again, all this is within I think. So the X amount is one point one. Times the cash outflow, so let's figure out what the cash outflows would be. Well, we pay uh semi-annually. We pay these the um interest on it. Right, uh including. So one, two, three, four, five, six, so six, at the sixth interest payment. I guess I should do these in different colors, actually, these should all be red. So we pay some sort of interest six times. Um, okay. So how much interest do we pay? Well, we pay um, like, what's the actual amount that you pay each time? How do I find that? Is it a constant payment? Yeah, it is a constant payment. So it's just. Is it, is it just A? Is it one thousand? A given P. Nine point five percent six? That's my guess. That's the interest you pay each thing. So this is an I, this is an I, this is an I, this is an I, this is an I. So then the cash outflows, again, terrible notation, but that's okay, is one thousand and ten dollars. Plus six I. And X is gonna be one point one times that, so we just gotta solve for I now. I is one thousand, A given P nine point five percent six, there might be a factor table for that. Or not a factor table, but a. Table, table, here it is. Is there nine point five percent? There is not nine point five percent. So I just have to do, to find the formula. Uh, I already have this formula, don't I? Yeah, principal A given P, that's what we were doing before. So this is going to be zero point uh zero nine five, one point oh nine five to the power six. Over one point oh nine five to the power six minus one. Uh, this will be, so one thousand times. Uh, zero point zero nine five times one point oh nine five to the power six. Um, then we have one point oh, one point oh nine five to the power six minus one. So I get my constant payments are two twenty-six point twenty-five dollars. So my cash outflows. Are gonna be one ten plus six times two twenty-six point twenty-five. Okay, so cash outflows are one ten. One ten plus six times the answer from the last part, which is two thousand three hundred and sixty-seven point five. And we know that X equals one point one times two three six seven point five. So. My answer is two thousand six hundred and four dollars and twenty-seven cents. Have a feeling it's not right, but let's, let's take a look. Not right, no, okay, so that is, yeah, that's not, not the answer.
What's the answer?
One thousand and thirty dollars.
Okay, um, I think I know how to do it. So can you scroll up? Back to the question. So you have nine point five percent and it's face value of one thousand dollars, and bonds each year. Go by the same rate for interest, so I think it's nine percent of one thousand, and then you just do the. Same equation that you had, one thousand and ten plus six I, should be ninety-five dollars times six.
Oh, so it's nine point five percent of the thousand?
Each year, but it's not compounded, so it's like ninety-five bucks a year, I think, I'm not sure, but. I don't know if that will get the right answer.
So it would just be, it would just be. One point one times uh one. One oh one oh plus six times ninety-five.
Maybe, yeah.
One point, one point one times. Plus six times ninety-five, one point one times one. No, I get one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight.
Oh, okay, well. I'm out of options.
Okay, he, there is a solution. He does it in one line. So his solution, I'll just write it here and we'll try to understand what happened. Let's see. So the solution is, whoa, solution is this. So the final amount after six payment periods is, and that's the final amount. Final given principle. Forty-seven point five, where did forty-seven point five come from though? Is that the? Well, that's half of ninety-five, isn't it? Yeah.
Oh, because it's semi-annual, right? So it would be half nine point five percent is your yearly interest. And then you just adjust it for the six payments or whatever, or how many payments there are. Yeah, six. Something like that.
But how is that a ten percent increase? Why is that, where did ten percent come in here? Oh, it's five percent here. Ten, yield a ten percent return on investment. So he did. So the nine point five percent is accounted for here, because what's the, yeah, what's the constant payment is. So the nine point five percent is per year. So that means it's a nine point five percent divided by two. Is four point seven five. So four point seven five percent. Per semi-annual, per six months, and you pay that from a thousand dollars. Right, which is gonna be forty-seven point five, so that's the interest that you pay every six months. And then they just found the final value.
Sorry, uh, that's the interest that we get paid, right? Or are we paying the interest? Cause if we buy a.
That's the value that increases the bond.
Yeah, so that's the interest money that you get, like that you make.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it is.
Yeah, cause I think that's how bonds work, no?
Yeah, cause they go up in value, you don't have to pay interest on the bond.
So then the five percent comes from the fact that it wants a ten percent return on investment?
Well, I don't know why the, why the final answer is ten thousand or one thousand and thirty, cause that's not like ten percent more. Than what we paid for.
It's not, no. What are we looking for? What would the selling price be? The selling price? To make a ten percent, well, it's, I guess because of this interest, it's gonna be. This final amount. Doesn't have to be ten percent of the initial amount you buy it for, I guess that, because you account for the interest that you're making here. So what they did is they found the final value. Of the. The final value. I don't really understand. Sure, this makes sense, that's the payments you make, you're you're getting.
Okay, um, so see how it's negative in the beginning, so that's what you have to pay.
Yeah.
But if you get that positive, add it to the forty-seven five, you should get a value that's ten percent greater than what you initially paid, I think.
I think so, yeah.
But since you paid for that, you technically lost your cash value, like your bank, so it goes into the bond. So that's why it's not ten percent greater in the end.
Yeah, 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 if you were to add, if you were to add this together, that would be ten percent greater.
Okay, so that makes sense then.
I don't know, I don't know how the ten percent, okay, sure, I see, okay, ten percent increase. But we're making semi-annual payments, I guess, so it's divided by two, but why is that the interest rate here? Why is that the? Why is that the, I guess because that's what we want the rate of increase to be?
Did we get five percent in the questionnaire, or did it just like give us the answer?
There's no, it doesn't say five percent anywhere here. It says ten percent return on investment, which is where, where I think the five percent's coming from. Because, because semi-annual, but.
Yeah, um, I don't know.
I don't know either. Any suggestions? If not, I'll just move on, I'm gonna open the window quickly.
Yeah. Maybe the semi-annual applies for both the nine point five percent and the ten percent.
I don't see why the ten percent is an interest rate though. That's telling you you want a ten percent increase, right? Like, is that, how is that a?
Maybe it's a semi-annual ten percent or yearly ten percent return on investment, I don't know.
Yeah, I think the ten percent is a yearly, like, so that's the minimum you want to sell it for. And so from your present value until X you have there. That's, you want ten percent there, so I would be ten percent. Uh, um, the interest you're getting paid is semi annually, so you have to do like the I effective for the interest. Things, and then basically it's just moving it all, moving the present value to X and all of the. Is to X and finding like that value.
Okay, okay, so let's erase this, cuz this is all wrong. So, whoa, this is. Erase this. And, well, actually, we could leave that, but that's fine, so, yeah, okay. We wanna know what is the value at year three? If we do get a ten percent increase, so, okay, ten percent is the yearly. The three yearly increase, like, isn't it the three? But I guess.
I think it's just an annual, like, I equals ten percent and it's compounded annually.
Yeah, one, zero point one over something minus one, so the something there is, well, I understand we're gonna end up getting five percent, but let's see why. So let's get this equation. So, uh, number of compounding periods per payment period, well, we don't know the compounding periods unless. No, 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 that's the payment periods, so I guess we assume it's. We assume it's annual compounding, if they don't give that. Yeah.
I think you do assume it's annual, if nothing said.
So the number of compounding periods per payment period is a half. There's half a compounding period every payment period, payment period, so that's a half there too. And the number of payment periods per year is two. So I get one plus zero point one over one. Power of a half minus one. So square root of one point one minus one is. Yeah, it's not zero point five, but it's close, is I is zero point zero four eight eight. Eight, it's fine, as a decimal, so I equals zero point, um, no, sorry, equals four point eight eight percent. So that's the effective interest rate per payment period. Which is how much, so that's what you wanna gain, because you wanna gain ten percent at the end. So then we just do, we get the final value, so we just say one. Uh, how much did you sell it for to get a ten percent increase? Oh, okay, actually, yes, I, I drew this backwards, didn't I, these eyes should all be facing up. Yeah. The eyes should all be facing up, because you're not paying interest, you're gaining interest, so that should all be. Up like that. Yeah, okay, so then. The final value. Of X, so X, how much you paid for it to get that ten percent increase is going to be. The amount that the, amount that these are worth, so they're each forty seven point five, A given, uh, uh, F given A. Um, four point eighty eight percent for six payment periods. Minus the value. Um, F given P, four point eighty eight percent six. Which is uh what he did. Yes, yes, and then out of this he got one thousand and thirty point four dollars. Okay, sure, so to explain it a little bit again. The amount that this is worth, so the ten percent return on investment, we're using that as like the interest rate that we're gaining. So we know that how much the equal payments are, the equal payments are nine point five percent semi annually of a thousand. So that's forty seven dollars and fifty cents, forty seven dollars fifty cents. So there's six payments of that, right, six payments of that, this interest rate we get fro- using this ten percent increase. We want a ten percent increase, so that's, that's gonna help us get the interest rate, we find the effective interest rate per payment period. That is the, um, this is the amount gained by the, um, by the uh payments to you. Minus the amount gained by the, no, minus the amount. Yeah, minus the amount gained by the, or lost really, I guess, in interest by the, this payment here, cuz it's a negative, it's, it's, it's going down. That difference will be. The final selling price, I guess, of the payment, of the bond at year three.
So what's throwing me off about this example is how we're given that ten percent and we're also given a nine point five percent? So how do those relate with each other?
This nine point five percent semi annual bond is, just think of this, this is the bond information, right, this is the bond information here, in the big brackets. You just need that to figure out the stuff about the bond, the uh constant payments, right, uh, the, well, the, the worth of the bond, I guess, at the end and everything like that. But this number is gonna be the actual interest rate, the amount you're gaining. Per payment period, right, so this, this is just bond information, this is actual problem, like for the, to solve the problem. Information. That's how I think of it. Okay, let's move on to question seven. Question seven is. XYZ company has two bond issues outstanding. Both bonds pay one thousand semi annual interest plus one thousand at maturity. Okay, bond A has a remaining maturity of fifteen years, bond B has maturity of one year, what is the value of each of these bonds now? When the going rate of interest is nine percent. So I. Is nine percent nominal. Nominal. And, okay, so we have two bonds. What is the value of each of the bonds now, so we want the, essentially we want the present worth. Yeah, essentially we want the present worth of this stuff, so the first bo- the first one has, um. Semi annual interest, so I have to find the effective, okay. The, we're finding the present worth of both of these bonds, right, so for bond A. We want the present. Okay, there's two parts, the present worth of the, let's say, let's start with the present worth of the one thousand dollars at the end, so it's gonna be one thousand. P given F, now some percent for fifteen years, right, as bond A has a. Oh, no, both bonds have one thousand dollars, a hundred, yeah, so fifteen years. And then we wanna add on to that, the, the uh hundred dollar payments. Okay, of P given A, some percent, which won't be the same percentage here. Um, and that's gonna be thirty payments, semi annual for fifteen years. So what's the percentages here? So the first percentage that goes here is going to be one plus, now it was nine percent, zero point zero nine over something. To the power of something minus one, so again, let's use the formula that I have here, oh, you know, I'll paste it again. Very useful formula to, to have written. Uh, if I can find it, there you go. So what is that interest rate, it's going to be, okay, so C K, K, let's start with K, K is the number of payment periods per year. So how many payment periods per year, uh, we do one, uh, two, so two, two is the answer. Semi annual, uh, so twice a year, number of compounding periods per payment period. Um, I think compounding periods are one year. So there are two payment periods in a year. That's right, there are two compounding periods. Number of compounding periods per payment period, so there's a half a compounding period in a payment period. Right? So out of this, uh, and this is to the power of a half, so this is, um. Square root of one point oh nine minus one. This is zero point zero four four oh three, which is four point four. Oh three, let's just save, well, okay, fine, oh three percent. Four point four oh three percent. That's the number that goes in here, four point four oh three percent, and then this one will be a little different, this is for, um. No, why will that be different, what, why, why would it be different? Why did I even say that, this is the.
Uh, I got a question about your K value, real quick.
Yeah.
So it says the number of payment periods per year, and it's uh semi annual, so wouldn't it be two?
Yeah, this is, uh, it should be a half.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. We just wrote that backwards, yeah, yeah, that's right. Uh, why did I think this would be different, no, this, this would just be nine percent, I think. And this would be four point four oh three percent. Because this is just, it's, the going interest rate is nine percent compounded yearly, so, yeah. I, I think that's just the number. Yeah. Wait, what? What face value? Looking at the solution is confusing me more, and so. Hold on. What number do I get out of this, let's just try that, what number do I get out of this? Nine percent. Thousand, P given F. Oh, this should be the same, actually. One hundred P given A, four point five thirty, this should be the same, let's try, but. I, I think what I wrote is actually the same as what's the answer here, okay, so then. This will be, uh, P given F nine percent fif- uh, for fifteen years, that is in a table. Nine percent for fifteen years, P given F nine percent fifteen is zero point. Two seven four five, so. One thousand times zero point two seven four five. Okay, plus one hundred, and this is not in the table, so P given A is, uh, I need to find that. Pain formula, and so now it's, um, uh, so. One point oh four oh three to the power thirty minus one over. Zero point zero four oh three times one point oh four oh three. To the power of thirty. And let's see if I get the same answer. Ooh, I get, how did I subtract it instead of adding? For a second I was like, got a negative number, how did that happen, I just had to click minus instead of plus. And of course I had to click a million times, there we go. So, I think it's a little off from the number that he got, so it's not the same thing that I wrote, no, it's about a hundred dollars off from what he got, so. The reason that is, okay, so my answer is one thousand nine hundred ninety seven point four two, four forty two. Um, I think this is slightly wrong, this, this is wrong here, let me look at that for a second, it's a thousand dollars. Yeah.
Uh, I think if you scroll down a little bit, I don't know if it'll make a big difference, but in the P formula you have at the bottom.
Yeah.
You use the equation P given A. Um, you're using the interest rate you found, right, I think it'd be one point zero four four.
Oh. Why did I write it like that, I don't know, one point oh four four, yeah, four, yeah, yeah, yeah. Four four oh three. Four four oh three, yeah, yeah, I just, it was just, I just didn't see what I was writing, thank you, that should make a difference. Let's try it. Four four oh three, four four oh three. Uh, okay, still not the answer, but closer to the answer. Two point seven something. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's just from the table, so that's fine. One hundred. Times one point oh four four oh three to the power thirty minus one. Yeah, so I get one. Nineteen twenty two point fourteen now, which is like getting closer to, it's eighteen ninety five is the number that he got. So the difference, I think, he did differently here, he said, he said this was. Four point five percent for thirty periods. And. I guess. It doesn't say that this is, it doesn't say that this is nine percent compounded semi annually, I understand it's a semi annually interest here. But I guess you just assume that, because this is semi annual interest you're collecting here, that the. Interest rate on the one thousand will also be semi annual. I think that's right, so then this happens here. And I think I have to have a formula for that, it only was a four point five. Yeah, but anyways, the second part is the same, so it's. This is just P given F four point five percent thirty, and that's the only difference, now we get, we'll get the same number. As him. So, to note here, uh, seems like from this question we learned that interest. Um. Compounding periods of the face, I know it's called the face value, the, the. But I don't know what that, what's that called at the end, the value it is at the end, that you get back? Yield, maturity yield or something? Let me try to find if I find the name. I can open my note, I don't know, I'm looking at it even later, okay. Um. The amount of the bond is issue, I got, I don't know, count, compounding periods of the, uh, uh, final. Amount. Final return amount, uh, match the. Uh, payments of on interest or of interest. So even though this doesn't say, this is nine percent compounded semi annually, since this is semi annual, it matches, okay. Okay, so that's the present. That's the present worth of the first one, let's try to see the present worth of the second one, let's try to do it ourselves. So the present worth of the second one is. Um, bond, uh, bond B has a maturity of one year, that's the only difference, bond B has a maturity of one year, so. The present worth. Is gonna be one thousand. Present given final, uh, four point five percent two. Plus one, well. One year till maturity, do you still gain one interest, so. So it's that, isn't it? No, 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 that isn't. Think that'll work, it's just gonna be one that, uh. P given F. Is gonna be. Uh, one point oh four five to the power of negative two, I think. One one oh oh times one point oh four five to the power of negative two, so I get a thousand and seven dollars? Didn't, didn't see the answer, so I don't know if that's right or not. Didn't I didn't see the answer, so I don't know if that's right or not. Not quite. Wait, what has it a thousand one hundred and three? Three oh four five, two compounding periods. Oh, no, 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 hold on, hold on, that's not right. That's not right. So you get a thousand dollars then, you still have two payments. You still have two payments. One of. So we may as well just do one hundred. Uh, P given A. This percent is four point four oh, four point four oh three percent two payments. This should work. So this is one thousand. One point oh four five to the power negative two. If I wanna add to that. Okay, I wanna add to that. How's that ninety something dollars? The pain formula, which we have up here, uh, let's, let me just copy it again. So that's one hundred uh one point oh four four oh three to the power two minus one over. Zero point zero four four oh three times one point oh four four oh three. That's four percent, yeah, to the power um two. So answer plus a hundred. Oops, a hundred times. Something squared minus one. One point oh four four oh three over zero point zero four four oh three times. One point oh four four oh three. Squared, not the answer. Not the final value. Let, before I look at the answer and uh let me draw it. What do we have? One year from maturity, this is year zero. This is year one. There's a semi annual there. So there's. The present value is you're gonna gain two interest payments. Plus. Plus. You're also gonna gain the thousand dollars. So. Yeah, you get four point five percent. Semi annually on that thousand dollars. So we move that back to to here. And so that re- that's right, and let's check if that's right. One thousand P given F four pro- yeah, yeah, that's fine. Then for here. We want P given A, so it's a hundred dollars the constant payment, two constant payments. We get four point, well, he just uses four point five percent on that again. In fact, for the last one, he also just used four point five percent. So why did this not give me four point five percent? I understand it's close. I think it, okay, I think we're okay because this is close to four point five percent, that's fine. So P given A four point five percent, let's just call it four point five percent. Yeah, hold on, four.
Question, uh, is this the lecture four homework?
Lecture five homework.
Okay.
Um. Number seven. So. No, we did the same thing as, what, did I type it in wrong? Is this negative two? Is that what P given F is? Present given the final, we wanna go back. We wanna undo the interest you're gaining. Seems to make sense to me. One thousand times one point oh four five. To the power of negative two. Oh, yeah, I made a mistake, I must have made a mistake punching this in before. We do get the answer. That is the present value. Okay. One, a thousand, a thou- a thousand one hundred and three point twenty six, that's the present value. We did do it right. I, again, I just, I just typed this in wrong in my calculator, I think when I did it the first time. Okay, good. So that question went okay. His solutions are kind of weird, um. Like there's some stuff here that doesn't make sense that he wrote. It's also a bunch of typos in it, in the solutions, I don't really know why, how that can happen so easily, but whatever. Okay, last question from this uh practice pack number seven or whatever, no, practice pack number seven, practice pack for week five. So if you borrow a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the thirty year term at nine percent APR variable rate, compounded monthly. And the interest rate can change every five years. What is the initial monthly payment? Okay, that's not too bad. So. Um, I just need. That's not bad at all, the fir- the first thing I can do. So the, we want pretty much uh A, so. Twelve thousand. A A given P some percent for uh monthly payment, so thirty times twelve. Whatever that is. Now we just need the effective rate, so the effective rate is. Um. Compound, it's compounded monthly and you're making monthly payments, so you can actually ju- uh the the. I'm pretty sure, since if it's compounded monthly and you're making monthly payments, you can just divide this by twelve. Right, you can see, you just take nine percent, zero point zero nine divided by twelve. Um, so zero point zero nine over twelve is. Zero point zero zero seven five, uh not percent, but but as a decimal, so that's uh zero point seven five percent. Um. So for this. We need a. A pen, so this one. Okay, so this one here, we have um uh twelve thousand. Interest rate is zero point zero zero seven five. One point oh oh seven five to the power of whatever thirty times twelve is. Just three hundred and sixty. And then again, one point oh oh seven five to the power of three hundred and sixty minus one. Hopefully, this should be our correct monthly payments, let's see, so twelve, a hundred and twenty thousand times. Zero point zero zero seven five times one point oh oh seven five to the power of three hundred and sixty. Over one point oh oh seven five to the power of three hundred and sixty. Minus one. So I get nine hundred and sixty five dollars and something cents. Yep. Okay, we're good with that one. Nine hundred and sixty five dollars and fifty five cents. So that's the initial constant payment, monthly payment. If the lender's interest rate is nine point seven five percent APR at the end of five years, what will the new monthly payment be? Oh, okay, so I'm pretty sure we just subtract the amount you've paid off of the loan. Um. Yeah, I wa- I I think.
Yeah, I think you have to find the monthly payment for five years and then hundred and twenty K minus that, right? And then change your interest rate?
But then, but then what about the interest gained on the loan? The gain, the the gain, the the loan. Let me think for a second.
So I think you have to find the balance at the end of five year.
Yeah, that's for sure, so let's, let's, let's start with that, so um it's gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand. Minus, uh, how many, what are the payment periods? Monthly payment, so minus five times twelve times nine hundred and sixty five point fifty five. Anything else I need to subtract from this or add to this? Don't I need to do? Don't I need to do one hundred and twenty thousand F given P?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
F given P um. I can just say nine percent three, can't I? No, I can't say that, no, no, I have to say um. Zero point seven five percent. Um, five times twelve. Minus. That. Okay, that makes sense to me, that'll be the balance. That'll be the balance at year five, oops. Year five. Um, okay, so this is gonna be one hundred and twenty thousand, one point oh. Oh seven five to the power of whatever five times twelve is, which is uh sixty, I think.
Sixty, yep.
Power of sixty minus sixty times nine six five point five five. Um, and that's equal to, I'll do it on the next line. So. Hundred and twenty thousand times one point oh oh seven five to the power of sixty. Minus sixty times nine, oops, nine sixty five point fifty five. Make sure I type that in right.
I think you need the uh the factor for the monthly payments to, to like move it to. Uh, B sixty, like at the end of sixty months.
At the end of, yeah.
So you have to use like nine sixty five, uh, find F given A. For.
Oh, okay.
That interest in the same month.
So instead of this, it's just F.
So I think it should be like uh nine sixty five times. Find F given A, yeah.
Uh, for zero point seven five percent for, what, a sixty, sixty payments?
Sixty months, yeah. And then you have to use this as principal to find. The A for the rest of the years.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense to me. So this is um. Not that, this is. Nine six five point five five. F given A zero point seven five percent sixty, so I don't have to write that twice, I just write it here. And then now I need F given A. F given A. Looks like this. There, I guess, F given A looks like that. So it is one point oh oh seven five. To the power sixty minus one over uh zero point oh oh seven five. Now this. Is. Nine, nine, six five point five five times. Fraction. One point oh oh seven five to the power of sixty minus one over zero point zero zero seven five. So I get a hundred and fifteen thousand and fifty five dollars and ninety five cents. Let's see if that is what the answer is here, I know this is the answer to the whole question, I just wanna see if that's. Um, yeah, that is right. That is right. So that is the balance. That is the balance at the end here. Now, I know the balance, I know that there is going to be how many more? Uh, twenty five more years of payments at the other percent, so I can just do the same thing, so. Pretty much it's one fifteen oh five five point ninety five. A, A given P some percent, um. Uh, well, actually it's gonna be nine point seven five over twelve. Percent for uh twenty five years times, or twenty five times tw- twelve, whatever that is. The percent is that because again, it's still compounded monthly and monthly payments, so it's still just nine point seven five, that's the new percentage, nine point seven five over twelve. Right, so uh I need the A given P formula. A given P is this. So this is one one five oh five five point ninety five times. Zero point zero nine seven five, one point oh nine seven five to the power of um twenty five times twelve. Three hundred. Over one point oh nine seven five to the power of three hundred minus one. So. One one five oh five five point ninety five, nope, not times ten to the ninety five, one one five oh five five point ninety five times. The fraction, zero point zero nine seven five times one point oh nine seven five to the power of three hundred. One point oh nine seven five to the power of three hundred. Minus one. So I get that it is eleven thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety six cents, seems high. That's monthly payments, what? No, there's no way that's right. I admitted typo. Yeah. Let's see where, where I made the typo. One one five oh five five, one one five oh five five.
Uh, I think the interest, uh, nine point seven five divided by twelve.
Ah, yes, yes, that's correct. Um. I'll do it on another calculator, cause I don't wanna lose the save. Oh no, I guess I can just back up if I lose the save, so this is. Uh, nine point seven five over twelve. Is, so the interest rate, that is zero point eight one two five percent. So I will adjust all the interest rates now. So this is zero point zero zero eight one two five. Zero point zero zero eight one two five. Zero point zero zero eight one two five. So I get. One thousand twenty five point three, which is the correct answer, and I'll just correct that in here, zero zero eight one two five. Zero zero eight one two five. Eight one two five, okay, and we get the right answer. And there you go, okay, that question made sense to me as well. So, okay, I've done now, we have both, we have forty minutes left, so I guess I have a midterm that I didn't finish. As well, so maybe let's do that next. And then. Yeah, and then we'll see what we do after that. Um. Okay, let me find it now, hold on one second. So I was doing. This. Yeah. Okay, I didn't do this question, so. Let's give it a try. So this is from, uh, this is from, uh, what is it called? It's called twenty eighteen midterm, is what I have it as. Twenty eighteen midterm. Okay, good. Um, so suppose you deposit eight hundred dollars today and withdraw one hundred dollars at the end of. Each year for five years, on the fifth year you also withdraw a thousand dollars, which empties out the account, what percentage did you earn on the average, on average over those years? That's not too bad to figure out, so um. We're pretty much finding the fin- we know the final value. We know the final value is a thousand dollars. Right, so okay, eight hundred first of all. F given P some percent uh in five years. Then we have one, uh, so plus one hundred. F given A some percent for. Uh, five years, with five payments. That equals a thousand. Yeah, that equals a thousand, so now we just do the formulas and solve for I. Let's see. This is eight hundred, F given P is one plus I to the power of five, plus one hundred. Um. Let's see what F given. Let's see what F given A is. This is F given A. So this is one hundred times one plus I to the N minus one over I equals. Sorry, not to the N, to the five over uh minus one over I is equal to a thousand, a thousand. So solve for I, I guess? Okay. Seems a little hard, but. Let's give it a shot. Um, that goes like that. Those brackets don't have to be so fancy. This can separate into two fractions. Minus one over I. And. I can th- I can. No, no, I g- I guess leave, no, I can't leave, that is the same fraction. This is one plus I to the five. Eight plus one over I. Minus one over I. Equals ten. Doesn't really help us, though. Obviously, I'm trying to not. Uh foil that thing. Uh let let me put this in Wolfram, just to see if we have the answer even, if this even is, we'll find us the answer, so we don't waste time. Um, and if it if it does get the answer, then we'll try to solve it. But if it doesn't get the answer, then why waste their time? So um uh solve for I in eight times one plus I to the power of five. Plus something over something. Minus one over I equals ten. Just gotta be specific with how I'm typing. One plus I to the power of five over I. Oh, I don't have the answers. I don't have the answers, so. And the only result is. Neg- negative six percent. So I guess eight. Does somebody have the answer to this? I guess.
Uh Adam?
Yeah?
As I I think like the hundred F A should be on the right side too, because that's also withdrawal. So like cash inflow.
Um minus the, yeah, hold on, hold on. So that's. Oh, I see, okay. Equals one thousand F given A. Okay, uh so that would that would only change, that would make this negative and this positive.
Um.
Yeah, it 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 would, but I don't have to write it like that. I can just write it like that, and it would be the same thing.
Oh, yeah.
Right, but I I will. I will write it like this. This is one over I, because that's how I have it typed in. So I just changed one sign here. Oh no, sorry, two signs, like I just said. And I don't know the answer. Did. Do we see this? I think it's Gervitz's midterm, I don't I don't actually know. Someone just sent it to me. So now I got sixteen percent. Which kind of makes more sense. That's a lot. You put eight hundred dollars and in. In five years, you have, you can take out a thousand, and also you've been taking out, so you have a thousand five hundred. That's a lot of money. Um, so sixteen percent does make sense to me there. Let's see if I can find the answer, although I don't think I will be able to. Sometimes I can't tell if. A Adobe Acrobat doesn't. Load things or it's just blank. Okay, I don't know. And since I honestly, since I don't have the answers to this test, that is not really much of a point. Let me see if I can uh. Ask someone. Well, Fatima's here. Fatima, do you have the answers to this?
Uh, what is this?
It's the one.
I just joined.
From, is the one from yesterday? Number six?
Oh, yeah. I can send it. Give me one sec.
Yeah, thank you. And then we'll know the answer, if it is truly none of the above. Cuz my answer here is sixteen percent. Um anyways, uh since we have the answers, I may as well continue the test then too.
Should be right, cuz like a hundred, like every year is like twelve percent. So if you just keep getting the hundred and have like twelve point five percent interest, at the end you can just cash out eight hundred. But now you can cash out a thousand, so I think it's, yeah, yeah.
So it's a little more, yeah, yeah. Sixteen percent does make sense.
Does make sense, yeah.
And I'll I'll say when we get the, when we get the answers. Um, okay, so.
Answer is um none of the above.
Yeah, and that's what we got. We got that too.
Okay.
So all good. Okay, thank you. Could you send me the solutions like somehow? I don't know how, do you have like?
Yeah, I'll send you the whole PDF.
Yeah.
Give me one sec.
Thank you, thank you. Um, okay, so what is the value of the payment surrounded to the closest dollar? In the. What? What? Oh, did I miss something? Yes, I did. Use the following information for the next three questions. So this is part of the question. So. Use the following information to answer the next three questions. You borrowed ten thousand to be repaid in two years of weekly installments. The nominal interest rate is that compounded monthly. Okay, this is a pretty basic um question, but it's fine. So uh we want the value of the payments, so. A given P, yeah, so our present amount. No, A is ten thousand. A given P some percent, next two years, weekly installments, so that's uh fifty two times two, which is one oh four. Right? And we just need the um the interest rate, the proper interest rate. So the proper interest rate is going to be one plus eighteen percent over something to the power, something minus one. According to. This formula. Right, so what is it? Well, the number of compounding periods per payment period, so compounded monthly payments are. What is the value of the payments you paid to his weekly installments? So how many compounding payment, how many compounding periods per week? There's a quarter of a month per week, so one quarter. And then you want the number of payment periods per year is fifty two. Right, yeah. So that'll be your effective rate, okay, which is here, um. One plus some fraction, uh zero point eighteen over. Huge interest rate. Times fifty two minus one. So my eff- uh, I don't want cosine of it, I want the answer. Uh, my effective interest rate is one point thirty eight per- thirty nine percent. So one point thirty nine percent. Uh, that's good. Now I just need um my A given formula. Just that. So it's going to be ten thousand times. Zero point zero one three nine, one point oh one three nine to the power of a hundred and four over one point oh one three nine to the power of a hundred and four minus one.
Um, can you go up a bit?
Yeah.
Uh didn't, uh shouldn't there be a one over four in the power as well?
Yes.
Uh when you calculate.
There should, thank you. Should be a one over four there too, so my interest rate is wrong. Let's do that again. So this is one plus uh zero point eighteen over one quarter times fifty two to the power of a quarter. Minus one. Uh, to the power of a quarter minus one is. Zero point zero zero three, well, I guess I can just say zero point three four four three seven percent. Uh, where did my mouse go here? Okay, good. Thank you Fatima for the answers. Um, so let's see the next bit. I gotta put that in properly now, so this is. Zero point zero zero three four four three seven, one point oh oh three four four three seven. One point oh oh three four four three seven. Yeah, that's right. Um. So let's plug that in, so this is going to be ten thousand times the fraction. Zero point zero zero three four four three seven times one point oh oh three four three seven to the power of a hundred and four over one point oh oh. Three four three s- three four four. Did I do that up here? Nope. Three four four three seven to the power of a hundred and four minus one. I get constant payments of a hundred and fourteen point fifty six dollars. Which would be in A, and let's see if that's the answer. Uh, number seven? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's correct. Okay, good. We did that, that's number seven. Let's take a look at number eight, the next one. This here. Okay, using the value you found in number seven to find out what is still own owed on the debt after one year has passed. Okay, so it's ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars F given P, um it was comp- eighteen percent compounded monthly. So that's just eighteen over twelve, uh how long? Is it just eighteen percent over twelve for twelve months? I think that might just be it for that one. And then um minus the amount you paid, which is uh one fourteen point fifty six times F given A. Um, we need the proper percent rate here, so zero point three four four three seven, zero point three four four three seven percent. And after a year, there's been fifty two payments. Yeah, that should be the balance. So this is just gonna be one uh ten thousand. Ten thousand um F given P, so this is just uh, well, whatever eighteen percent is to be, eighteen divided by twelve is, so one point five. Uh, one point five percent, yeah, so this is one point oh one five to the power twelve. Min- so this is one point five percent. Minus one fourteen point fifty six times whatever thing is F given A. So this. So this is one point oh one five to the power twelve minus one over zero point zero one five. This should be the balance. Let's see if it's correct. Ten thousand, one point oh one five squa- uh not squared, to the power twelve. Minus one one four point fifty six times. The fraction, one point oh one five to the power twelve minus one, zero point zero one five. So I got. No, no, that's not right. I got the final balance is ten thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and eighteen cents. Somehow we got more in debt, so. What did I do? Did I subtract? Ten thousand, one point oh fifteen to the power twelve. Why twelve? Twelve months? See the answer quickly. Maybe is, okay, I see. So. Minus one one four point fifty six times one plus I, one point oh one five to the power twelve minus one. Zero point zero one five. Yeah?
Uh. I think you used the fif- one point five percent again for the F A. You're supposed to use the.
Yes.
On three four percent.
That's right. Okay, good. Zero point uh zero zero three four four three seven. Zero point zero zero three four four three seven.
And fifty two, not twelve.
Yes. Thank you, that'll be it. Zero point zero zero three four four three seven. Change that to a fifty two and zero point zero three four four three seven. So now I get. Five thousand four hundred and forty four point six, and that's close enough to what he got. It would be in the same range. Five thousand four hundred and s- he got five thousand four hundred and sixty six, so I would put four 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 in D, and he would also put his answer in D, so there you go, that's good. That that's that's fine. Okay, okay, so let's take a look at the next one. Um. So the next one is find. Present something, P P sub ten. Uh, I forget what that means, so let me find what that means. Um, I'll look at my notes, I guess.
Principal payment in year ten.
Oh, the payment, so the payment like towards the principal.
Yeah.
I see. So I have that here. P P P sub N equals A minus I N. I N. I N is B N minus one times I. And B N is A. Pay. So together, that is P P N equals A minus. A. P given A I N minus one I. Yeah. So this is, the constant payment is one one four point fifty six, one one four point fifty six minus one one four point fifty six times P given A. Uh, percent. Is just. This percent that, what was this? Zero point zero four four three seven, I think it's still that. Zero point zero, zero point three four four three seven percent. N minus one, so nine. And. Let's give it a try, one one four uh I'm I'll write it a little over here. One one four point fifty six minus one one four point fifty six times uh the pain formula. Uh I want. I screenshot it, yeah, here it is. There it is, so. That's going to be uh one point. Oh oh three four four three seven. To the power nine minus one over. Zero point zero zero three four four three seven. One point oh oh three four four three seven to the power of nine, close brackets. One one four point fifty six. Minus one one four point fifty six times. One point oh oh three four four three seven to the power of nine. Minus one over. Zero point zero zero three four four three seven times. One point oh oh three four four three seven to the power of nine. I got a negative number. That is nowhere near any of the numbers. Huh? Okay, yeah, got it, not at not at all. Yeah, nope, just nothing here. Oh, I didn't multiply it at the end by the percentage rate, hold on. The interest. So I assume that interest is going to be zero point zero zero three four four three seven. Okay, now I got an answer that's not negative and close to, I mean, it's more than ninety eight, I mean, it's. That would be the answer, let's see if that is the answer here. This was part, this is nine? No. Although he did the same as me. P given A.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's N minus one, I think it's. Big N minus small n. It's like, how many are, how many is there a total minus how many did? How many payments have you made?
Oh, I see.
Like, I'm pretty sure it's like big big N minus small n is what he did.
Uh yeah, he actually does that here, he does well, he does. Oh, okay, 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 yeah. Big N minus small n. Big N. Big N is one oh four. Small n is nine, cause you're gonna make the tenth payment, so you've made nine payments. So this is one oh four minus nine, which is ninety five. Right, ninety five.
I I think, I don't know, is it nine or is it ten though?
His solution says nine.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I say that. This is ninety five. So then I just change this value. That's all I changed, one of the values to ninety five, okay. I mean, two values, I understand, but. Seems like that'll make a big difference, nope, eighty two point six, which is I think the answer, yeah. Close enough. Okay. Ninety five, ninety five, so then why does my formulas, did I, did I type it wrong? I hope not, but. That's possibility, why does my formula say B N minus one? Oh, no, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. This uh says N minus one. This. Is. Big N minus N. I just read it wrong, didn't type it wrong, I just read it wrong. Probably should add maybe this formula to the notes, I'm gonna s- put it there just so I have it, just in case you wanna you need to use it. I'm gonna add that to my notes there. Obviously, you can derive it again, like how I derived it here, but. It's not, yeah, better to not do that. Okay, let's carry on. Um next one does not take into account the first bit there, so it's a new new question. Doesn't have that initial amount, I mean, those initial values. So you deposit a thousand dollars into an account that pays ten percent compounded monthly. After four years, you withdraw the money and deposit it into an account that pays six percent compounded quarterly. The money compounds in that account for another four years, how much is in the account? After the eight years have passed. Okay, so. You, let's start with. How much is in the account after the first four years? Yeah, how much is in the, so initially, you have a thousand dollars. Okay. Uh so we're looking for F. Okay. Initially, you put in a thousand dollars. And we wanna know the final value given the principal. Ten percent compounded monthly. Is. Is. Is just ten percent divided by twelve. Uh and there are. Uh four times twelve payment periods. Okay? That will be the final amount. That'll be F one. F two will be F one times another. F given P. It pays six percent quarterly. And there will be four quarters, I mean, uh four sets of four quarters. So sixty quarters, yeah, okay. And that F two is our answer. So I could say F two is one thousand. F given P. Ten percent over twelve. Uh four times twel- well, maybe I should do, what's ten percent? Ten divided by twelve is. Uh zero point eight three repeating percent and four times twelve is forty eight, of course. And then this is F given P. Um six over four is three half, so one point five percent sixty. So this should be one thousand. Uh F given P is just one point. One. One point zeros, what is it, one point zero zero eight three repeating. To the power of forty eight. Times. One point oh five. To the power of sixteen. Think that will be right. So this will be. One thousand times one point. One point oh oh eight three repeating. To the power of forty eight. Times one point oh five to the power of sixteen. And I get none of the answers. Three thousand two hundred and fifty one point one. Okay. So. What did we do? Thousand dollars into an account that pays ten percent compounded monthly. After four years, so four s- four four compounding periods, I mean, four times twelve compounding periods. You put the money into a different account, so that becomes the new principal, and we wanna find the final amount. Given this new principal, that new principal has six percent compounded quarterly. So and how many compounding periods are there? It'll be four times four, so how much is in the account after eight years have passed? I'd say that, did I type in the decimals wrong though? Zero point eight percent, no, one point oh, yeah, that's fine. And yes, I did, this is fi- I did five percent. That's not five percent, it's one five. One five. Okay, now I get an answer that's closer. One eight eight nine, well, one eight eight ninety. Ninety. Uh and there you go. One eight. Not one eight eight ninety, but one thousand eight hundred and ninety. Let's check that answer. For number ten. Yep, we're good. Okay, good, I'm happy that worked. Let's try the next one. So the next one here is suppose that the interest rate between T zero and T one is one percent. And then the rate increases by one percent each year thereafter, so the rate between one and two is two and so on. Find the value of X that makes the following two cash flows economically equivalent, okay? So. It's a gradient. And it's a. It is a. Geometric gradient. No, it's not a geometric gradient, no. Is it a geometric gradient? If we set the interest rate. To zero. And the geometric rate. No, 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 that doesn't make sense, nevermind. Um. So what? Suppose the interest rate between T zero and T, do I just have to do this all manually? I think so, so let's just find the present value of both, let's find the present value of this one first, cause it's a little easier. Um oh no, it's actually not easier at all, so never mind, but. Yeah, let's do the numbers first, I guess, so the present value. Is. Okay, I think I just do it all manually. A hundred. P given F. Um. Uh one percent one year. Plus a hundred. P given F, one percent, sorry, two percent. One year. P given F. One percent, one, if anyone has a better idea, uh probably, it is probably is better, I just, this is what I'm gonna do, I don't really know.
Same idea, but um you don't really have to write the whole P given F thing, I mean, if you're more comfortable with it, sure. But if you wanna save time, it's always good to remember, just do one point zero one.
That's true, that's true, well, I'm on the last one now though, so I may as well just finish right there. Uh so this is uh P given F. Uh so it's, oh, it's every year, oh boy, okay, um so it's gonna be. Uh this is gonna be one percent, this is gonna be two percent, this is gonna be three percent, this is gonna be four percent, so it's gonna be. Four percent one year. And then it's gonna be. P given F. Three percent one year. And then it's gonna be P given F, four percent, nope, uh two percent one year. And then P given F, one percent one year. All applied to that one hundred. So this is gonna be. One hundred P given F. Whoops, P given F. So this is gonna be one point oh one to the power negative one. Plus one hundred, one point oh two to the power negative one. One point oh one to the power negative one. Plus a hundred, one point oh four to the power negative one. Uh one point oh three to the power negative one, one point oh two to the power negative one, and one point oh one to the power negative one. I guess? Sure? So this is um one hundred times. One point oh, I guess I'll just, I'll just divide it, let's just.
What year are you comparing them at? Like, why is it all negative? Okay, yeah, no, I get it.
So. Uh I'll do it all just with fractions, so a hundred over one point oh one. Plus a hundred over one point oh two times one point oh one. Plus. A hundred over one point oh four um. Times one point oh three times one point oh two times one point oh one. So I get, that's worth two. Two hundred and eighty five dollars and eighty. Eighty five dollars and eighty cents. Eighty one cents, I guess. So that's the present worth. And now I just need to equate it to this present worth, so that's gonna be two eighty five point eighty one equals. So it's gonna be X. P given F, one percent one year. Plus, okay, you know what, I will just do, I will skip this part and go right to the. Actual formula for this one, so. This is. Uh one percent one year back plus X. This X is gonna go one, two, three years back, so it's gonna go. This, it's one percent here, two percent here, three percent here, so it's going to be. X times. Um. One point oh. Three to the power negative one, one point oh two to the power negative one, and one point oh oh one to the power negative one. Three, two, one, yeah, and then this last one is gonna be the same thing, but with another four, so plus X. Times. This. Right? But just in the front. We have one point oh four. And now I just uh factor out the X, so X equals two eight five point eighty one over. One point oh one to the power negative one plus. One point oh three to the power negative one, whoops, to the power negative one. One point oh two to the power negative one, one point oh one to the power negative one. Plus. That. That. Whoops. And one note does the thing that it does. There you go, okay. Now this can just go into a calculator, so. Two eight five point eighty one over. Something plus something plus something. First thing is one point oh one to the power negative one. One point oh three to the power negative one. Times one point oh two to the power negative one, times one point oh. One to the power negative one, and the next thing is. One point oh four to the power negative one times one point oh three to the power, not squared, to the power negative one. Times one point oh two to the power negative one, times one point oh one to the power negative one. So I get one hundred dollars. One hundred and one dollars. And I go, that's one of the answers. And let's see if that's the answer. For number eleven. Yes, it is, good, I'm happy it worked. Might be a nicer way to do that, yeah, like, it seems like he does it in one line, so. Um. Oh, no, wait, does he do it in one line? Doesn't really make sense what is one line, I see. But yeah, anyways, that's fine, we got the answer. So while it's two o'clock, there is only actually two questions left here. Is the next one long? Yeah, it's two o'clock, so I gotta I gotta get going, cause I have a physics lecture now, so like, I mean, in ten minutes, but. Uh so I'm gonna get going now, so hopefully this was. Helpful, even though. I still make lots of mistakes. I f- I feel okay for the test. Um. I'm not doing it tonight, cause I'm in talk, so we do it on Friday. Um but that uh also comes with that I have, and you know, more more stuff that I have not even covered yet, the chapter five stuff, I have not even read that yet, so. That will be in my next two days of work. But yes. Anyways, for everybody doing it tonight, good luck, um I hope it goes well. Hope you get, you can get the grade you want, um I'm sure you worked hard. And other than that, yeah, that's everything for today, I mean, that that's everything for now, I do have another session.